Order. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Here.
Trustee Kessel, I guess, is excused. And Trustee Shipley?
Present.
The Clerk Slater.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, I wish it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Article three, is there a motion or discussion for tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. It's a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no presentations, Article five. Now is the time for public comments on anything that is scheduled for tonight's agenda. That includes an updated education policy for township employees, a new posting for a buildings and grounds manager, pathway improvements that are coming up this summer, planning commission appointments, and also a proposed daycare over near the Watermark. So at this time, wishing to comment on any of those issues are welcome. Is anyone virtually?
No.
Okay. Article six, approval of the consent agenda.
Will get approved. Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer, excuse me, Trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, is there a motion or discussion to approve requests for invoices scheduled to be paid on March 28th?
Shipley moves to make a motion to approve the invoices as they've been submitted.
Support.
It's a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, Article nine, first item, zero, two, three, twenty, twenty-four, updated education assistance policy. Thank you Treasurer Corstange and also Manager Smith, who both reviewed the township's personnel manual and noticed that there was a need for a stronger seminar conference policy. So with that, Manager Smith?
Sure. Really, the, there was never a policy that addressed tuition reimbursement nor education or seminar conferences. So we took what was a guide that was being adhered to for many years and actually put it into a formal policy and have that before you tonight. Right now, you can actually see as part of your consent agenda tonight, you approved quite a few seminar and conferences and tuition reimbursement requests. Those will no longer appear before the board. We have some internal controls that we are proposing happen at the administration building and they all tie back to the approved budget at the beginning of every fiscal year as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
And just to comment, I think that this updated and modified assistance policy is long overdue. It's in the budget of various departments. It's let the department heads and let the manager place this and approve this as they see fit. It doesn't need to come before the township board.
And I'll just say, since I started and since Jade started, he's been sick probably of me asking him every time, like, are these, what's the policy? What's the policy? What's the policy? Because I think it's normal to have a policy that directs the education expenses within and to make sure that we have appropriate follow-up to the things that we are approving. So thank you, Jade, for putting this together.
One, one thing that I did miss, it was brought up, brought to my attention by Trustee Kessel that underneath the conference and seminars approvals, any elected or appointed official is supposed to go back for the Personal Finance Committee, that they don't actually have approval authority. You could delegate that, but it is being requested that that be changed to the Board of Trustees as opposed to the Personal Finance Committee.
Which, which is fine. I think, I think the big part was the education within the staff, just to make sure that we were following some rules of some sort.
I agree.
Mm-hmm. I don't know if it requires board approval specifically, rather, but I'm fine with making that change.
Okay. Well, with that, I move to approve the education assistance policy with the minor modifications that township managers just made.
I support. It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve the proposed updated education assistance policy as stated with the one amendment mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, item zero, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four. Consider approval of building facilities and grounds manager position. This is a new position, but it is not an increase to the number of staff, as Manager Smith noted in the packet. Manager Smith, could you walk us through what this proposal is?
Sure. So I've been on board about six months now and we've seen some staffing changes within the township and also it's given me an opportunity to work with the directors and the staff to look for other efficiencies in the way that we operate. And one of the things that is pretty evident to me is that we don't really have anybody that's over the building grounds and facilities as far as brick and mortar buildings and processes and working on the administrative side of that. Building and grounds right now falls under Parks and Recreation. They don't really all, they don't really go together, especially with Melanie working on Parks and Rec and taking Parks and Recreation, which is a new department to the township in the last year, in a whole nother direction and putting emphasis on the parks. Some of our other assets are being somewhat ignored. Fire stations, the library, even some of the facilities within our parks, like the restrooms, those really are facilities, not so much. A parks director is not really supposed to know much about restrooms and plumbing and electrical and things like that. And then we have our admin building as well, which is fairly new to the township, but still has some issues. There was a open position that has been hosted for quite some time in the building and grounds, which was a maintenance employee. And so we've decided to not fill that as a maintenance employee and turn that position into a building facilities and grounds manager position. So there's no increase in headcount. And for 2024, we're not asking for any budget amendment either because we are so far along into the budget year. By the time this gets filled, we have enough allocated in personnel costs to cover it. In 2025, in full transparency, we will see an increased cost moving forward. We did have a very good meeting with the building and grounds staff and to get their take on this and they also feel this is long overdue. They said this will really bring some structure to their job and their direction that they are given every day or lack of previously.
I think it's a great idea.
I, I think that since we have a township engineer now on board.
Yes.
That this ties in rate with them and can only improve the facilities that we continue to put money into for the residents. So it makes perfect sense.
I agree. And I think instead of outsourcing some of that that previously was done, I think it's important to keep it in-house.
We were spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in outside engineering firms to handle this in a way that it just wasn't being handled. So I think even if it costs a little bit more initially, it's, we're saving. The savings is well worth it.
Jade, are we looking at internal candidates or external only or?
Nope, internal and external.
Okay.
We did very much, we're transparent with the staff and said if they met the qualifications and they wanted to apply, they were more than welcome to apply for sure.
If any decided to take that up there or they decided?
No, because I needed, it's before you tonight for approval and then we'll go through that.
I just thought someone would wonder, someone had mentioned it.
There might be a couple that might be interested, but yes.
So they will do all the scheduling, I would assume as well?
Yeah.
There's so much to schedule now every year we add.
Well, you know, you talk about preventative maintenance programs, which we need to tighten up throughout the township. And then just again, RFPs and then the other, other administrative functions that go along with that, scheduling with the trades, scheduling with contractors, making sure that all of that's being done. It's really taking away from our crew that's in the field right now. And this person will actually support all the departments across the township. It won't actually be a director position. It'll report directly to me, but it will support all of the directors and other towns, and other departments out there.
This will fill the big gap too in oversight, lacking oversight of managing third-party contractors too.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, further discussion, a motion?
Make a motion to approve the creation of the buildings, facilities and grounds manager position.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Treasurer Corstange to approve the posting and creation of the buildings, facilities and grounds manager position, supported by Trustee Shipley. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, item zero, two, five, twenty, twenty-four. This one's kind of an exciting one. Consider the approval to amend a planned unit development, number two ordinance. Basically, this item concerns amending land use to allow for a daycare around the Watermark building. This comes to us upon a review and recommendation from the Planning Commission. And with us to present this, oh, Planner Hendricks is not here. So Manager Smith, can you walk us through this?
Yes, and I believe the, Mark, are you the petitioner? No? Yeah. No? Okay, all right. I just didn't get a chance to say hi to you yet, but yes, I'll go through it first and then the petitioner is here if there's more questions.
Okay.
So this is a, the PUD number two, which is an ordinance that has, as you can see right now, there are five allotted usages, usages in that PUD. This is just allowing for a daycare to be an allotted use, allowed use in that PUD. There is one slight change that I need to make aware and this was, again, I apologize for this oversight because PUDs in Cascade Township are actually ordinances. Ordinances take two readings. So this is the introduction of the ordinance with the second reading and approval being at the next meeting. It's, it's the way that the, that it was set up in Cascade a long time ago and.
Does that make sense?
I've talked to our township attorney about changing that.
Okay, questions, discussion, details?
I don't, I don't have any objection at all to having a childcare facility in there and it looks like it's well planned out. Do you have a cap on how many children might be present at any given time?
We do. There are three different caps, actually. We have a per-child cap based on wall square footage. You have a per-child cap based on staffing and then another per-child cap based on restroom. So it's looking like we probably will have to add another restroom at that facility. So our goal from a financial standpoint is to be able to provide services to between forty and sixty children.
Okay.
In order for the numbers to be able to work for us. I think we'll be able to do that.
And you currently run the gymnastics facility as well, right? So you've been a business within the township for a long time. How long have you been within the township?
How long have I been in the township?
Well, the gymnastics facility.
Well, I grew up on Kilburn, on the Thunderbolt River. So since I'm super young. But I've owned Thunderbolt Gymnastics since 2000. So when I bought that, we had about 200 families and six employees. Today we're over 900 families and 47 employees. So between 200 and 300 families on a waitlist.
Yeah. I listened to the Planning Commission meeting when you presented and I just thought that was important information to include in this because it really is an asset to the community. Thank you.
It's the perfect location and use of space and such a needed business. It's fantastic.
Our understanding is the, well firstly, it sounds a little apprehensive because there's quite a bit of competition within a short distance, but from what I understand, all of those facilities are on plus-year waitlist. So we also agree that it's a need, it's a critical need, almost a crisis need. And we'd love to be able to provide for more things, but again, there's further footage limitations and whatnot. So I mean, if we can provide a great spot, a great experience for them, even if it's just for kids, then, you know, that'll be a help.
Yes. Huge help, perfect location.
Yeah.
One last question. Um, now that we would ever want it to be needed, but has the plan's been run past the fire department as well? For emergency response?
Um, so the fire department actually trains at our facility on a very regular basis. Just last week, we did pit extraction training for all three of your shifts. So for nobody or for anybody who's not familiar, we have bone pits. They're about eight feet deep. There's a trampoline at the bottom and then there's foam cubes. So we have a seven involved gymnastics for a lot. So we're first responder trained in USA Gym, USA Gymnastics. And so a lot of other clubs don't do this. I don't know why, but we coordinate with Cascade Fire on a very regular basis. They come in two to three times a year bringing all of our personnel on basis for the CPR. And then they use our facilities for the pit extraction training, which they pretty certain that about your former firefighter. So that conflict gives some continuing training requirements for the fire department. If we have a cervical or spinal injury inside of the pit, it's one of the most difficult extractions because that pit is so unstable. So so we've done that, we've been doing that training with them now for, I think, a lord of five years and they come to our to do that. And then now it's sort of been as the procedural protocol for the other gymnastics and youth athletic facilities within the community as well.
So they'll be well aware of the additional life load there.
We actually talked about this last week.
Okay.
Made Andy and the deputy chief and Mike and everybody aware that hopefully we'll potentially do the daycare right next door.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, with 900 to 1,000 athletes, we, they're very familiar with our facilities. So they'll, they'll run emergency calls to us a few times.
Okay, thank you.
We have a very good working relationship.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Further questions or discussion?
So this is first reading?
Yeah. Yep. Could you help us with the, since it's an ordinance, wording the motion properly?
Yeah, you're recommending to introduce.
The PUD.
The PUD.
Okay.
PUD amendment to ordinance.
All right. I'll make a motion to introduce the PUD zero, two ordinance amendment for Gulfview Office Park to permit a day, a child daycare center as recommended by the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission.
Support.
It's a motion by Treasurer Corstange, supported by Trustee McDonald, as stated. All in, Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater.
Yes.
Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. And thank you for coming tonight in person too, to answer our questions and see you face to face.
Yeah, thank you.
Item zero, two, six, twenty, twenty-four. Pathway and parking lot improvements for 2024. Engineer Thorne?
Yes, the 2024 Pathways and Parking Lot Improvement Project is a continuation of the planned five-year rehabilitation plan that I helped the Pathways Committee develop at the end of 2022. It was a plan ultimately in give or take five years to rehab up to 14 miles of a 20 or so mile network of pathways that we have that at the time and still much of it was in dire need of that rehabilitation. Last year we did just over four miles and this year we're proposing over just another mile on Spalding Avenue, just south where we ended last year, south of Cascade Road, all the way down to Burton and then Burton from High Ridge, which is the dead end on the west to Spalding Avenue. Easier to see in the map. But that dead end, just for context as well, will be where the Burton Pedestrian Bridge, that's state grant funded, will be built in the next couple of years. So that bridge will pick up right where that path is and the hope being right now that that path will be completely rehabilitated and a luxury to use. We packaged along with this Pathways project this year, parking lot improvement for both Township Hall and for the library, just outside the doors here. We had originally bid that project, the parking lots alone, last fall. The bids all came back high. So it was, it was kind of just put aside for this year to package with this one. The sole intent being that we would get better prices doing them together. And that sure seems to be what happened. Estimated the total of the complete project to be about 915,000 and we ended up with 685,000 and some change, both within budget for those projects, respectively, the pathways and the parking lot. And so here today, just asking that we accept the bids that were submitted by Michigan Paving and Materials. They were the low bidder. They're a company that I personally worked with in the past and in the field as an inspector on paving jobs. They do a great job. They have subcontractors. I think Catwood Excavating is their, their main sub for doing the dirt work, the grading, et cetera. And so asking that that bid be accepted and that you approve formalizing a contract to proceed with the construction. Contract dates are April 8th and to be finished by September 27th. Just in preliminary, preliminary discussions with the contractor, they anticipate starting at some point in May. And I would anticipate the project to take anywhere from, I would say, seven to 10 weeks, depending on how they stage. Any questions? Yeah.
Eric, if I remember correctly, back this past winter, we had a motor vehicle that did some moderate damage to one of our elevated sidewalks. Has that been taken care of?
Yeah, so that's located on Buttrick, probably a couple of blocks north of 30th Street. Actually, we did receive an insurance settlement as of today. Had reached out to a couple of contractors on bids for that project. So having got that settlement today and those estimates, I believe I'll be returning in a couple of weeks to present that to you. To have that work, it will be repaired. My anticipation is later in the spring, possibly early summer. I had reached out to the contractor that I anticipate we will be going with. Originally, they had told me they could do spring, but just given the rate, the rate of speed that insurance moves, I had, it's been a month since he told me that. So do have to confirm that, but long answer is short, yes, it's planned to be fixed.
Good.
We certainly have the means and the contractor. It's just right now the matter of formalities.
And I know we've had some inquiries from that part of the township, people that utilize that. So I know it's a, it's safe, just can't drive with snowplow on it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's in need of some help.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep.
I have a question maybe, I think, for Manager Smith. Just the way these are presented, just wondering with the pathway millage, that's covering the pathway portion, but not the parking lot more portions. I just want to make sure that clear to people that they don't think their millage dollars are covering the improvements to the, the parking lots.
Correct. And I was trying to quickly look at the paperwork just to show. So in the RBA, that's included in the packet online and then that anybody can see, it is broken down as to what portion is coming out of the Pathways Fund, which is 750,000. And then the parking lots are coming out of an allocated approved budget already at a general fund of 205,000.
I just wanted to make sure that people listening, the way that they're combined together, understand that our Pathways Millage is not covering the parking lot portion.
Yep. Yeah, that's actually, you know, there's a, there's an advantage to bidding it all at the same time, clearly, because it came in under budget, but also we have then the way we do the bid specs and send it out is it's by project. So we know how to break it down to allocate the dollars appropriately.
Wonderful.
Yep.
And then I just wanted to thank Eric. I know you've been here over a year. But I know this was one of the big things that we've heard from residents is our pathways and improving the pathways and just thanking you for your work. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Appreciate it. Very happy to work on Pathways and happy to see them be much improved as they need it.
For sure.
Well, then I make a motion to approve the 2024 Pathways and Parking Lot Improvement Project as proposed by Eric, our township engineer and proposed contractor.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley, to accept the build on the proposed Michigan Paving and Materials contract, as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Last item of new business, zero, two, seven, 2024, Planning Commission Appointments. And this is for held off on making this appointment until the change, until we finalize the number of planning commissioners. Now that that is taken care of, there are vacancies and I recommend for appointment to those vacancies, reappointing current Commissioner Chris Nordeig and current Commissioner Scott Rizzi to those, to those positions. Discussion, questions, motions?
Scott shows up just in time. I do have just a question, just, just looking at the way it looks on, in front of me. A fifth year, three-year term. I believe he started in the middle of a term though.
May 12th.
Yeah. Are, are there limits to theirs?
I believe there were, but there are not.
There, there were, but we removed them.
That's all.
Right. With that, I, they're very experienced, very knowledgeable, helpful people at the township. I move to approve Supervisor Lesbrunz's appointments.
Support. It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve the proposed Planning Commission Appointments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article 11, public comments. Now is the time for comments on anything, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not. Welcome, Commissioner Rizzi.
Scott Rizzi, 7238 Cascade Road. Thank you for the reappointment. I actually did want to comment because, and that was my comment, is it says fifth term in the packet. And I mentioned to Brian Hillbrands, I think, when he was here after my last appointment, that I felt that there was an error in the wording of that as far as the terms, because I'm in my, I'm completing my ninth year on the Planning Commission right now. I have my 10-year anniversary on the Planning Commission would be May 12th of 2024, because my first meeting was May 12th of 2014. So if you do the math, the three-year terms, five years or five, you know, it, it, it doesn't work mathematically. So I took over for McCarthy, Karen McCarthy, I think, when she moved out of the township. So I served the last few months of her term before I was appointed to a full term. So I think that counted as a whole term anyway.
In, in your insight, but I, yeah. But fifth, third year term just looked a little.
So 2014.
It's a little deceiving.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was make all of the 2014 to now 2024.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Smith, can we have staff just look into that? Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Moxley.
Thank you. Ralph Moxley, 1757 Hillsborough. Chair of Planning Commission. Thank you for reappointing Scott and Chris Nordeig. As former chairs, their input is very valuable, I find. So I'm so glad to see their back on the commission. I'd also like to just take a minute and thank Jade for getting a new community planning director. Andrea's great, great addition to the staff. Thank you so much. Also, I'd like to thank Madison for all the work she did filling two roles at one time. I mean, she was really pretty heavily loaded for many months there. She did a great job. So I really want to thank her. Also, Daniel Bouchard has come in and helped out on some of the presentations to the Planning Commission. She is very thorough and I really appreciate what she's doing for us. The last thing I want to mention is that the Farmland Preservation Committee Subcommittee has been kind of in a rust period for about two months now. And I'm hoping we can get that thing going again and have some regular meetings, hopefully on a weekly basis, to pull it all together. And I'll depend upon Scott to help with that. So, okay. Any questions?
No, thanks for all your work. Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're working on the policy and the zoning ordinance. We're not, but the professionals are and agree that that'll be exciting to get off the ground.
Great, great.
Thank you, Mr. Moxley. Any other public comments, either in person or virtually? Manager comments?
Just two quick things. They're actually just notifications about things that are coming up. And I know that there are a lot of people on the Thunderbolt River that are part of the Special Assessment District And I know that there are a lot of people on the Thornapple River that are part of the Special Assessment District. At our next meeting, Jeff Carpenter from the Thorne River SAD Committee will be here to update and we will also have a proposal in front of you for navigational buoys along the river. So that's been something that they've been undertaking, but I know there's people at home that have probably been wondering what's going on with that SAD, but just to keep you updated that that is upcoming on the April 10th meeting. And then also we have a work session at 5:30 on April 10th to go over a hotel registration ordinance.
That's a good one. That'll be a helpful.
That's all I have tonight.
More comments?
As always, thanks for being here tonight, folks. Appreciate it. Well, you and I need to talk after the meeting.
Okay.
And Ken, welcome back. Get involved. Bring your neighbors with you. And just as a reminder, everything that we talked about is, as far as spending your tax dollars, it's all in the butt. So as of right now, we're whole and we look like we're healthy. So thanks again.
And transparent.
Oh, yes, and we're transparent.
By the way, it's funny, the work that's being done in the Friendship Park and the library, it's fantastic. And when you come up the hill now, you see, you know, it's got a prominence and it's kind of what I think people have been looking for, for years. There is that central location, you know, it's that gathering space for the public. And the library is such a magnet. It's our, it's our most used asset. And this is just making it way better. I mean, it's just really great. So.
Can't wait. Can't wait for the events to come.
Yes.
Soon the DDA, now that we're not doing the bus anymore, they're putting all their attention, energy and finances into the Village Center. So we've got a, a firm working up on certain draft plans for that, that hopefully we can see soon and start sharing with the public to get feedback on that. So that'll be really exciting.
Super exciting.
And that should go all the way from Tassel Park, what you would consider to be a village area, what you would hope. The, the bridge over the Thornapple, Tassel Park, all the way up to the Chowhound Fowling Giant Asphalt Parking Lot. And Old 28th, like a nice petite triangle. Any other?
I move to adjourn. Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.